Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: Character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
I'd like you to stand with me for an invitation and then the pledge of allegiance. I probably pause at this moment just to give you praise and thanks for who you are. But we know that many times we turn to you and call on you for our needs, our blessings. We thank you for the ones that you send our way. The Lord of nations seems to be in crisis, our world. The Lord is somewhat distressed because of a new sickness that has shown up in our homeland, even in close by proximity to Hamilton, Alabama. The Lord, we ask that, as always, you would seek fit to end this crisis, Lord, in your way. You're in control. We give you that honor and that credit. We never doubt you, Lord. You have the ability to cease this thing today if you seek fit. We put it in your hands, and, Lord, help us to be wise enough to follow instructions, to help with the matters at hand. Guide us in this meeting tonight, just as each time we get here. In Christ's name, I pray. I pledge allegiance to the fact that the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, in the good will of the Lord, with every dignity and justice for all. Before we start tonight in our actual business of the meeting, I'd like to make a couple of brief comments. I guess by now most of you have received your census envelope. It's now time to be counted. And I want to ask every citizen of Hamilton and Marion County to respond in a great manner to the census time and be counted. It's very important to our area. There's a lot at stake. I filled out mine in less than 10 minutes. No sensitive questions that I've found. Pretty much, who lives in the household in your age? A few little facts. It's real simple and easy to do. If you don't want to go online, you can actually answer the census in the envelope that it comes in. And it'll be delivered to your house soon if it hasn't already reached there. I filled mine out the same day and mailed it back the next. 10 minutes. Anybody can spare 10 minutes to do an important thing like participating in the national census that's now at hand. It's time to be counted. Pleading our citizens to please, please participate. Coronavirus is here and it's causing a national and local crisis. We must be reasonable and do the things that are recommended to stop the spread of this disease. Stay in homes are a very good way. Staying away from group gatherings if possible is another good way. Avoid traveling to large cities or foreign countries. Wash and sanitize. Forty-nine states and the District of Columbia have reported some cases at this point. I think unless the other state declared today, almost every state has some cases confirmed. So we see this contagious and spreading. Let's do our part to avoid being a part of the cause. Let's be a part of the solution. People need to keep their wits about them. It's not time to go crazy or to panic. It's time to stick together and get through this. As a community, we need to pull together. Panic buying is not helping anything. Try to control your emotions to the point that you be reasonable in all the things you do in the next few days. This is a good time for people to be unreasonable and get totally out of hand. So we need to keep that in mind. We need to keep our wits and try to not panic and overreact to this. If you get to feeling like you have a problem, call your doctor before you go to the hospital. They don't want you to show up down there unannounced. Call the doctor and tell him you need to get a test if that be the case. We hope it's not the case in Hamilton, but it should be. They're asking us not to bombard the hospitals and the emergency facilities. There might be somebody having a heart attack and they die because you panicked and lost your senses about this. So be careful about bombarding our emergency facilities unless you know it's total emergency. These hospitals are going to get over quite enough and the testing facilities as well. Good Friday will be coming up April the 10th. That's a holiday for the city. So we'll try to re-announce that at a future date. But I just thought in case I forgot it later, Good Friday will be a holiday for the city. And we'll have a little arrangement about our garbage pickup and we'll announce that at the next meeting. Any of you council folks want to address the public on this coronavirus? You're welcome.
May I want to mention that I mentioned about recreation services?
Yes. This morning, last night, I contacted Tim Kerr, our director at the rec center. And I told him let's meet early this morning. So at 9 o'clock, Tim and I met this morning. And he had been studying and looking at the pattern of other youth facilities, recreational facilities. We have closed our gymnasium until school resumes. Our seniors have decided to take some time off from their meetings. They're going to be giving their meals either at the site or delivered to their homes. We'll have no organized activities on our facilities like baseball practice, softball practice, things like that. We'll ask the coaches not to be doing that with their little teams. While we're trying to stay away from group meetings of any kind, we're going to ask folks to not do the usual things they do at the rec center. That'll be giving up any organized games or practices at this time until school resumes. And then that should give us safety line to go back to our normal activities. So those are some things we wanted to set forth here tonight. And as of today, we're still allowing folks to enter the city hall. I've asked our ladies to handle money, to wear gloves as they handle this money that's exchanging from hand to hand. So we're furnishing them gloves to wear while they work. It's an unusual time we're in, but it's just some things that we feel like we need to do to keep our folks safe. We had department head meetings last Thursday to try to discuss and figure a way to keep the city going should this thing get very serious and a lot of our own workhands become sick and skilled physicians like our operators in our water treatment and wastewater. People like that are trained to do their jobs. Our policemen are trained for special duties, our firemen. We're trying to make sure that we have enough staff to keep the city running. And we discussed this at length in the meeting of our department heads and it's been passed on to our workers. So we're trying to be ready as a city and be as prepared as we can be. We've been consulting with the Board of Education. Also, we've been consulting with the hospital and finding out what North Mississippi's thinking about this and the rules that are coming down from them. And as of now, there's no visitation in the nursing home. I know that for sure because my mom's down there. There's a lot of things that are happening that we're not used to, we haven't seen, but we're going to get through all this. And it's just, as I say, it's a good time to really keep your heads straight and keep your eyes focused on your faith. Thank you for mentioning the rec center, Tony. I appreciate that. Anyone else want to address this matter? Scott, have you got anything you want to say about it? Okay. I'm not sure I welcomed our guests tonight, but we're glad to have all of you. Thank you for coming. We're going to get into our meeting then. And on item one is a recommendation to approve the minutes of our March 2nd, 2020 city council meeting. Motion on the minutes. Gene, the motion that we approve the minutes will need a second. Please, second, all in favor. Thank you. That's two minutes. The second item is a recommendation to pass this resolution that I'm holding, Resolution 2020-3-16. And it's for the Declaration of Fair Housing Month for the city of Lethem, for the city of Hamilton. And this is a date that we recognize each year as our National Housing Fair Housing Month and declare it for the city of Hamilton. And I'd like to make this in form of a motion and get it passed so we can play with this resolution. Robert made the motion. We need a second. Gene, second, all in favor declaring April Fair Housing Month for Hamilton. Thank you very much for that. And if anyone would like to read this, it's here available for recognition. Item three on our agenda tonight is to recommend the contribution of 2,500 annually to the 25th Judicial Circuit Court District Attorney's Office to help hire a female investigator for Marion County. This investigator will work with all domestic violence and sexual abuse cases for Hamilton and other cities in Marion County. Most victims of these crimes are much more comfortable dealing with a female investigator. And this is why our DA, Scott Slieman, has approached all Marion County cities to support this program. Would that be a fair statement, Scott, that we just made of us?
Yes, sir. I thought I understood when we talked about this that we'd do this one year to begin with. And we wanted to go again with the rule. Is that not what we?
That's all I'm asking for, the one year.
Yeah, I thought we talked about that in the meeting. I'm not trying. No, yes.
You did say that you have a grant that's going to pay a portion.
I've got a grant that will pay a portion of it.
Right. And how long is your grant? Is it a?
It's a year-to-year.
A year-to-year.
Yes.
So do you ever, if you do not receive funds next year for the grant, is this something that you're going to continue? Or is it just strictly going to be based on how things progress this year? Or?
I hope to continue this on. I hope that the program that everybody sees is beneficial to your individual municipalities. And I think it's going to be beneficial to the circuit as a whole. So even if we were to lose that grant.
It's something that you would want to continue?
It's something I would look to continue just through budgetary means in my office. Do you have a push, Scott?
I'd like the motion made, sir.
If we pay it for one year, yes.
It says annual.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Let me have a second. We have a motion and a second to do this for this year. And then you'll come back and let us know if we need to repeat. Would that be fair?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll be building for one year then, okay? All in favor? Thank you. I'd recommend that we, on item four, that we announce a price to the Marion County Commission for a parcel of land that they're wanting to purchase in the event for the industrial park. I've recommended that we give them a price of $10,000 for each acre or fractional part thereof. They're looking at 5. something acres. I think the little map I had said 5.14. This actually reads 5.7, but I think it's actually 5.14 acres. And I'd like for us to establish a price here tonight with that land.
Do we need to? Does the Industrial Board agree to that? Do we not need to?
We're not agreed to set it. We're just setting a price.
But do we not need to? Do we not ask?
I think that's what they asked us to do. The Industrial Board was going to have to be fond and was to sign it, but they were looking to us for the price. Card limits.
Mayor, I disagree with that, like that. It's a little bit stiff to ask them for it because, you know, we're not going to be helping them any. I don't know what we're going to do with the land. And I think they're going to do something. They're going to do what I think they're going to do. I think if we want anything else from them, we're going to pay out the notes. Because I don't think we're treating them right. They're asking, you're talking about $10,000. You're talking about, I'd say $60,000 for the land. And I don't know what we'll ever do with it. I don't know what we paid for it. But I certainly, and I'm not trying to, we haven't talked about this. We probably should have. But I think we ought to be working with them on it instead of charging them a price like that. And the biggest reason I'm saying a price like that is they don't have any land.
Well, I'm negotiating a price. If the county wants to set a price lower, I'm negotiating.
Well, now, it's my understanding that whatever price we set and is agreed upon by the Industrial Board and everybody's on board with it, then they're going to roll that into the bond issue. So, I mean, it's going to be, we weren't offered any deal if we did a lesser price on the land. They still asked us, you know, to participate, $200,000 a year as long as the bond issue was in effect, regardless of the price of the land. They just wanted a price. Now, that's what I understood. Y'all can correct me.
I don't think we're working with them very fairly to ask them that kind of price for it when it's going to be here in Hamilton.
Suggest a price and let's see if we can come to your price.
I would say maybe $3,000 per acre. And because it's going to be for Hamilton, whatever's done. And I don't want to go into Winfield. That's what you're going to mess around and do. Winfield's going to give them the land. Come over there and do it. And I just.
Well, I understand something in the meeting. Because I mean, this. They didn't offer us, they came and asked us for a specific amount to contribute to the jail to go forward the bond issue. And they did not offer us a lesser amount if we gave them the land. They came for a price. And I don't remember them offering any lesser amount if we they want a lesser price. I mean, and maybe I missed something. I mean, y'all correct me if I'm wrong. But the way I understood it was they came asking specifically for $200,000 a year for the duration of the bond. And they wanted a set price for the land. And the land would be rolled into the bond debt. And each town within the counties would contribute to the bond payment.
It doesn't matter what you do or what you say. The people of this county are going to have to pay for it. And our people in Hamilton, we got the largest number of people of the whole lot. And they're the ones going to have to contribute the most anyway. We're going to be paying more than anybody else because we've got more people than anybody else. And I'll tell you one thing. You can go ahead and do what you're talking about. But when something else comes up, you'll see them working against us instead of for us because we're sure not trying to help them by charging them that much for it. I just, we're not going to have to use it. It don't look like we're going to anyway. They won't use it and they don't have any money. That's, we all know this. They don't have the money. And that's what we, isn't that right, Scott? They're broke.
The commission does not have that kind of money. That is true. And what they would do is they have to borrow the money to buy the land.
Right. And who's going to pay for it? We are, our citizens. Whenever they borrow, everybody's going to have to pay.
It's coming back.
Right.
I think the commission expects a price for the property. They would hold it against, I don't know if negotiating is myself and both of you here, but I don't think they, they are not expecting the property to give it. Or not expecting them to pay whatever the price is.
Which a fair amount would be, the $10,000? Because we agreed before to look at the appraisal that the state used for the land that they purchased. And instead of paying for an appraisal for the property, we didn't know that, I think. But we somewhat agreed that we would look at that appraisal and then use that amount.
That's when I came up with that amount.
With the $10,000.
Kind of use the appraisal numbers.
I don't think we ought to be charging this appraisal number because our citizens are involved in it too. We've got more people involved in the town and the county. More people. And I don't know what we're going to do with the land. And it's laid over there all these years. We've done nothing with it. So why can't we help out to get something over there that's useful for all the people of the county and not have it, things move from here to other towns in the county?
I see your point, Gene. If they had not asked us to, you know, price it for what we thought we should get for it, I wouldn't have come up with this.
Yeah, I understand your point, yeah. But I just don't think we're being fair about it trying to charge what we gave for years ago and used it, don't have any, as far as I know, don't have anything in the future useful.
After the land is purchased and belongs to the county, they're still going to expect the city to pay our fair share for the jail costs too. We'll be paying annually on the bond.
We'll be using it for anybody else.
Well, that's true. I don't know what you're saying.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to arrive at a price we can all agree on and feel good about.
Well, I think $30,000 would be fair to ask them. All you're talking about is $20,000 or $22,000. And I saw this city give away, I pick a lot more money than that for a lot less. And this year is going for something that's really valuable to this county and to have peace with everybody else in the county. Because if we are the county seat, we're supposed to do a little more for everybody else.
Well, could we just say $30,000 for that piece of property then? That's a number.
Well, that, that country's up to y'all.
Yes, sir.
But the Industrial Development Board has to agree.
That's correct.
So?
They're holding it. It's not up for me.
Right. And based on the other properties for?
It's different amounts.
Right.
With the state, the state cannot purchase property. In fact, the city even offered to give it to them and they go, no, 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 let us pay for it. So the state cannot receive property without being interfered with by any such procedure. But the other property out there has been sold at a lesser price or has been given away. It's a liper, liper.
Gene, why don't you try a motion on that and see if it gets a second, offering it to them for $30,000?
All right, I'll make a motion. We offer to $30,000 now.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I don't think you're making a mistake. I think you're going to pay three times back to the county also. We have to use their.
Gene, we're going to try another way.
Well, we have to use their jail.
I know, I know, we're taking a risk. I'm going to try it another way. I'm going to suggest that we recommend a price of $10,000 per acre. Whatever it measures out, we'll charge it $10,000 per acre. And I'll ask them for a second to that motion. I'm making that as a motion.
But I still would fix you something about a dollar.
$10,000, right.
You can make the recommendation. Somebody else about to make the recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm making the recommendation. I came back with a motion.
I make the motion that we set the price at $10,000 per acre for whatever amount it measures out to be. And then whatever we decide here will be determined by the Industrial Board if they agree to it. And if they have a problem with it, then we'll come back and revisit it, correct, Scott? So if we set this price and they don't like it and they think it should, then we'll have to come back and revisit it.
When you heard time is motion, please. This is what we'll put as a recommendation for this property. We'll get it approved by the Industrial Board. If they approve of it, then it'll be official with the county commission. They can buy this acreage for $10,000 per acre. Now, Tony's got a motion on the floor. We'll need a second. Bring it to vote.
I have a second, Ted.
We got a second.
I know the property manager, neighborhood owner, $10,000 per acre. She wanted to catch her, her fair price.
All right, we got a motion and a second to set this price at $10,000 per acre and sell it for whatever that parcel that they've looked at and told us they'd like to have measures out by survey, charge it $10,000 per acre. Well, before we set it to them, we'll get the Industrial Board to approve and section what we've done here tonight. And that's the motion and second that's on the floor. And we bring that, if no one is discussing, bring it to the vote. Those in favor of that motion? Those opposed? Gene's opposed to that. He thinks we're overcharging for this land.
I don't think you're overcharging. I think, I don't think we should charge it that much because we're going to have to use the jail too. And I just, I just don't, I think you're going to be sorry of it down the line.
This is the hardest, Gene, because they asked for a price and we finally have voted 4 to 1 to agree on a price of $10,000, which I think is still a bargain in the property. And that it's got water sewer and the streets already there, a cul-de-sac built into it for attorney purposes. And I think it's a bargain.
Why, it'd be a bargain, yes. But I'm not talking about it not being a bargain. What I'm speaking of is we've got to use that jail too.
I know.
And what if they, they don't have to build that jail here. What if they go build it in Winfield? And that's exactly what you're asking for. And that's exactly what you're asking for. All that you remember, what you supported whenever it comes down to it, they're not gonna sit around.
I, I don't disagree with some of your comments. I don't know if the county seat live here, if they can move themselves.
Yes, they can move anywhere they want to, I'd say.
That could be in this factory, maybe here. I'll see.
We're, we're down to item five already. Item five, we've discussed this on about our city cemetery. I'm gonna recommend in this motion that we, in this lead motion and second, that we hire Tommy Black to mow the city cemetery at four hundred dollars for mowing. He has priced himself and his equipment. He'll furnish everything and instead of us taking our straight hands and putting them in the cemetery to keep it up, outsource our care for our city cemetery and try it for one year.
He is, oh, and we discussed this before about the payment. Is the city cemetery, did they, did the cemetery board turn that back over to the city, or is the cemetery board still in control of the cemetery? The cemetery board is still in control? I think they did, and who all was on that board? There were several, maybe, you know, some that passed away, I really, I really don't know.
You say you're on that board, just follow, follow away.
The way I heard it, they got a cemetery board. Most cemeteries around do have their own board to, to keep that up, unless they're incapable of doing it, unless you hold their, you know, I don't, that's just what I understood now. I may be wrong.
So my question is, did they turn it back over to the city, which was mentioned at one time, but then there was some no sense that had to be tied up? Or are they still in control?
They're in control, nobody knows who they are.
I think the city's always been in control of this.
They have.
Well, the two thousand nine ordinance says that, that, that that's what the money is for, for the sale, the plots, that that money is for the beautification and the upkeep of the cemetery.
Is that right?
So, so my question is, if we agree to this, can we agree to spend their money if the cemetery board is in control of the cemetery? Or would they have to hire somebody?
Yeah, I think, there's been some dispute about that, but I think all that is technically the city's. That comes in, it's not, I think it's technically the city's.
So this money will come out of that money?
Yes, yes, we can, we can do it that way. Like, I don't know if there's any money in it.
Two thousand, two seven nine, you know. But the city is in control of that, and the cemetery board is not. That, that's my question. They can't, like, disrupt the money out of that, the county has to come through the city.
Currently, we're furnishing all the scenery, bill, manpower, everything is done by the city. Cemetery board is not doing any spending for the upkeep at this time. We pay, we pay our work hours to go down there and take their time from their regular jobs and clean up the city cemetery. We're trying to get them back to patching potholes and doing the street work and getting things done that need to be done, services that we are far behind on, and not be keeping up the cemetery. We'll outsource that for a year and see how much it helps us, how much it frees us up.
And you said he would be mowing it twice a month during the spring and once a month?
I would anticipate him doing it twice a month, probably in May, June. Maybe not even in June, April, when it starts, first starts growing, but on out in the hot part of the summer, it'd just be about once a month.
So you're expecting.
On through, on through about, uh, October, I guess, September, October. And he'll probably do it one more time or maybe twice to get rid of the leaves and stuff.
Did I say something on that issue? I worked for the city, y'all, I know that, and I've helped him before, it's, it's a job. It's a lot, it's a lot of work for him, he's involved, it takes a lot of manpower for him to keep that up. And I, I've been part of it, I understand. And sometimes it takes a while, in the wintertime especially, when there's leaves on it. So I can see Mike, it's a lot of upkeep to it. You just can't go in there and blow it out in two or three hours and be gone, it don't happen like that. You know?
Lot of handwork there. Lot of handwork.
Lot of handwork, yeah, I mean, you just can't come in there and mow it, you know? You can't do that, you gotta weed it, be careful, there's gravestones in there. Now, on the lower part of the back, you know, back toward the good, yeah, you can mow that. But when you get up there, you have to start laying the tarp down, rake on it, drag it out, and where that back, it can, it takes a lot of work. I know, I'm in part of it, I understand that. And it takes, it takes a lot of work off of his back, it takes a lot of workforce off of mine. It really does. I mean, he, I don't know if he's got the manpower to do it or not, but still, it's a lot that his crew could be doing, doing other things.
So is he gonna get the leaves up in winter, or is this strictly to mow?
No, he's, he'll take care of the leaves too.
So it's gonna be a year round?
I'd say nine or ten months out of the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He'll take care of whatever things that will go until this time next year, and it's revisited, or if there's any?
Four hundred dollars a month.
Per, per cutting.
Per cutting.
Yeah.
And he is insured if anything gets broken or turnover or anything, it's all?
Yes.
May I speak? I'm writing a motion, we accept it. That's not bad.
We got a motion, that's our Mr. Tommy Black, four hundred dollars for mowing or cleaning.
I wouldn't do it for that.
Just, just second, please. We got a motion and second on the floor. Now, vote in favor. We're gonna outsource the city cemetery cleanup for one year, and we're gonna revisit it in this same month, March next year, and see if we wanna continue on. This'll be a one-year contract with Mr. Black. Mr. Holloway, it's time for you to come and address the council. You'll come right up here, he's asked to speak to us tonight.
No, I'd like to. I don't need that. Anyway, my name's Lynn Holloway, and I live on Second Avenue southwest on Bailey Street. People call it Bailey Street. And, uh, the city, they repaved that road on my neighborhood, and I really appreciate what they've done on that road, with a bunch of potholes, and it was.
It stung you?
Uh?
It stung you?
Yeah, it was that one.
It was?
Excuse me. I thought you shot me. I thought you dazed and be mad. That's, I'm okay. Anyway.
Y'all hit it again.
Anyway, they, uh, they repaved the road right there, which, like I say, I, I appreciate they really did it, really needed it. But now, we've got an issue of speeding. And, uh, here several months ago, my brother was walking his dog, and the traffic is so fast up through there, I confronted, I went to the chief of police. And I've asked him, I come to city council, like, two weeks ago, interested, put speed breakers on there, and I talked to everyone on that street right there, and they're in cahoots with me about, we've got to slow these people down. We've got a lot of kids, grandkids, elderly people, we can't even back out of the driveway. What these people doing, I live in the first house, okay? They're doing thirty-five, forty, speeding them to twenty-five. By the time they get up to the cleaning's house, they're doing seventy, seventy-five miles an hour. By the time they get down to Dale's house and move that curb, they're not stopping at the stop signs, so that gives them more leverage right there, you know? I mean, come on, man, we gotta have respect for people, people walking down that sidewalk, people got, baby cars is coming down through that sidewalk right there, people walking on the side of the road because they can't walk on the sidewalk. I mean, I tell them to go to the sidewalk. But you know who I'm out as hell with? I've done confronting, all I'm asking for is if we can do something, put some speed bumps, put a sign up there that says, "Slow down," speed bumps, that's all you got to do. People do it everywhere, a lot of traffic. People come through there, especially school kids, they come crying up through here, and they're not gonna do nothing until somebody gets hit. And when somebody gets hurt, I hope it ain't one of my family members or one of my grandkids because I will lose it. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to slow these people down. And if I can't get the police to slow them down, then what else can I have, got no choice? I've just recommended it, I need some speed breakers. And you can ask anybody on that street I live on, and I think they'll say what I'm talking about. And I'm just speaking for the whole street, not only me. You know, I've got ways of taking care of it, I don't care. I'm just trying to do it the legal way to get from somebody getting hurt or the city getting sued or something like that, you know? And that's all I'm asking for, is if we can put some speed bumps up through there. It's just like a runway through there. Now, all you have to do is just go out there and sit at my house one evening between seven o'clock in the morning to eight o'clock, or from two-thirty in the afternoon to four o'clock, and you'll understand what I'm talking about.
I can look out my window.
And, and, and Bailey Hill's over there, he understands. I just talked to Braylon Jackson today, he understands. I mean, I just don't want nobody, I'm worried about the safety issue is the problem, man. You can't get back in, you're scared to back out of your driveway. I'm talking about their, their, and they asked me to put a, put up a speed limit sign about there from my yard, says twenty-five. They don't even see it. You know, people don't read signs. I mean, that's a proven fact, but it says handicap, what do they do? They park it anyway, they see that sign, they're not gonna do, unless they do something about it, you can sit at city hall, the police can sit at city hall in the back and out there while they're smoking a cigarette, and you can see them when they're on that stop sign. It's that simple. I mean, I said I go on a front porch and count them every day. Hundreds, hundreds, hundreds. And I've had no video, I mean, that's just nothing I might appear talking out of my head. I videoed this, I confronted some people about it, would you please slow down? Only thing, oh man, you don't know nothing. I'm just trying to concern for the people on that street and other streets that they speed on. Gene knows.
Oh, exactly.
You know what I'm saying? And that's all I'm asking, guys.
And I'm not ever gonna stop anybody.
I mean, if we can rise the tickets or whatever we're gonna do to slow these people down, I'm with it. I just don't want nobody to get hurt.
Well, let me tell you of a prime example, which you know anyway. Another teenager come down my street, Third Avenue, didn't make the stop sign, nearly took out my nephew's house, got a, a water main or a, they took half of his sidewalk out and left two of his fingers in the yard. Your police investigated that. I don't know how fast he was going, I was still incapacitated at that time.
And I'm not trying to put the police on the spot, they've got their job, you know, they've got their hands full too. But I think if we could just keep an eye on that intersection, I mean, they start back there before they get to the gas stop. They're starting at the first right there by the first path to church, and by the time they get to the gas, I mean, ain't nobody there, they're hitting second gear, believe it, and by the time they get to my house, forty-five. By the time they get to the cleaning's, oh, it's, they've already backed out there in fourth gear, ready to go. Don't let them stop you, man, go take the stop signs down.
We'll take this in consideration, Lynn, and I see your problem. We'll see what the city's position is, we'll see if it's legal to put speed bumps in, out, but we can do that. I, I really don't know.
I mean, I've seen it done in other towns.
I've seen it done in apartment complexes where it's a private road, but I don't know about the city street, you know, I just don't know. I, I'm, I'm appreciative of what you said, and, and I'm sorry you got stung, I didn't know the law.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's on anyone.
Yeah, I got the same thing, we got the same thing. Look, come down on my, I was sent here, and that's very horrible. They'll come by, they're trying to make that red light if it's green. They have to do, look, he said sixty percent, they're gonna go to make that red light.
It slows down.
It's dangerous.
When school's not going on, it slows down. Most of it's school traffic. A lot of them trying to keep going down through town. But I mean, that's, I mean, I was guilty when I was a kid, I mean, I can't say I wasn't. My grandma used to scold me every day, she'd be, I saw you come through there. Okay, I understand that. That was years and years ago.
We're gonna take some consideration of what you've said, we're gonna try to write some citations first.
I mean, that's, the city just can't slow down, that's all I.
I do. We believe that the cops might could help us with this, and, uh, we're gonna put some good effort on it, we're gonna check about speed bumps also and see if that's a legit thing to do, you know, and for a city street. I, I've seen apartment complexes and places where they, uh, you know, have five mile an hour speed limits, but if twenty, if you hit one of those running twenty-five, you're gonna go, you know, in the.
School zone, they slow down for school zone, point. That's a residential area, you don't have to have a speed limit if you read your manual, you all know what a speed limit is to a residential area.
Must stay, I don't wanna say a word on that.
Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate, appreciate your time.
Sixty seconds, I'm done. Police department did talk to me and they paved that street, and they did put a car there to, and, you know, a person would go and they'd watch the road from there. Their presence slowed the traffic down and they stopped for the sign. If they don't have the fundings to put a patrol car there, I wouldn't see nothing wrong, you know, on my view, if they just, you know, a lot of times they'll park an empty car and people hate their police car, better slow down. You know, I've given permission to park on my property to slow the traffic down, and, you know, if they didn't have the funds to do that, possibly just a car sitting there at the extra amount of hours.
Good point, well, thank you. We're gonna take all this in consideration. Thank you, Lynn, for your address and Janice and.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. What, at the last moment, there's been a little matter that could be, uh, moving towards possible litigation, and we need to go into executive session. I'd love to ask the council to make a motion and second to enter executive session and break from our normal meeting for just a few minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We got a second. We're, we're gonna need to go into executive session. I'm not sure it's something we'll need to come back and vote on tonight. I just can't tell you whether this will turn into any kind of vote or not at this point. We, we, we need to go into session and talk just a little bit. We don't need to vote, yeah, we need to vote to go into session. Thank you. Thank you. Um, so we're not sure if there'll be any further business tonight or not. It is could have, but maybe, but may not. Thank y'all for being here tonight. At this time, we need to entertain a motion to end our executive session and go back into regular, uh, meeting mode. Having made that motion.
Absolutely.
Gene, second, all in favor of going back to regular meeting? After some discussion of matters that we felt needed attention from the city, um, we're gonna make a recommendation here to close our meeting tonight, our last official out of business. I'm gonna ask county to make a motion concerning our, uh, our commitment to the county commission for the purpose of building and sale. Tony is gonna help us with the wording on our, our motion.
The motion is going to be to commit, uh, or pledge two hundred thousand dollars to the county commission or payment on their up to ten million dollar fund for the new county jail with no increase in our fees that we're currently paying.
Tony's made this some formidable motion, do we have a second to that motion? We got a second. Mr. Owens, all in favor of that motion, would you raise your right hand, please? Thank you, none of us oppose that, thank you for that. Okay, uh, I don't have any further items for business in this meeting tonight. I would like to have a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that one.
Mr. Herbert made the motion, we need a second. I have a second. I would vote. Thank you very much.
Executive session, that tie in to what your vote was missing? No, okay. No, okay.